All the meeting order, this is a common council meeting of Tuesday, October 6, 2015. Roll call.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Here.
Buciewicz?
Here.
Verhaelen?
Here.
Toman?
Here.
Gale?
Here.
Kuzikowski?
Here.
Pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is approval of minutes of September 1st, 2015.
Kerkowski can make a motion to approve the minutes of nine, 1:15.
Buciewicz will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Buciewicz?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kuzikowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
Item four is a presentation by Waukesha. What's your title, Dan? Utility director? Dan? What's your title? General manager. Dan Dukenyak on the Waukesha Water Great Lakes diversion application. He has an update for us. Okay.
So I can just talk if you want me to?
Yep, do that.
All right, well, first of all, thank you for having me here tonight. If Caesar gets the projector going, then we can do a presentation, otherwise I'll just...
Dan, pull your microphone a little closer.
Oh, I'm sorry. Once we get the projector going, then I can continue on, talk about that, but... One thing that I think a lot of people need to understand about the city of Waukesha is actually who we are. There's a lot of discussion out there in the public that doesn't understand Waukesha. Waukesha is a city of about 72,000 people right now. There's a wide variety of demographics within... There's a... The median income and household income has gone up slightly from 2000 to 2010, but the people below poverty level have also gone up. We're actually a city, we're not necessarily a suburb of Chicago, we're a city adjacent to a city, and I think there's a lot of people who... With a diverse population, we're the urban hub, we have a transit system, we house the county services. There's a lot of people that use Waukesha County statistics when they're kind of pointing out the city of Waukesha, when the Waukesha County statistics don't necessarily represent what's going on in the city of Waukesha. That being said, there's a number of legislative issues that come into play when we're looking at the Great Lakes issue. One of them is the Groundwater Quantity Act, and basically what that says is, if the groundwater is drawn down more than 150 feet, it's bad, and we're in... The DNR is going to make us do something about it. And Waukesha, the groundwater is drawn down between 400 and 500 feet. So we're below that 150-foot threshold, we need to do something with our water, and obviously then there's the radium issue. When you get down that far, you have radium in your water, so we have to develop a new water supply. The Great Lakes Compact, we'll talk about a little bit, that it allows us to apply for Great Lakes water. The... When the Compact was adopted, there was an absolute ban on diversions out of the Lake Michigan watershed. Waukesha is outside of the watershed, there was two exceptions to that. One being a community that straddles the divide, like New Berlin. New Berlin, part of it's within the basin, part of it's outside of the basin. So, New Berlin was able to apply for water, but they only needed approval from the state. Since the watershed passes through Waukesha County, the city of Waukesha being outside of the basin, but within the county that straddles the divide, is allowed to apply for water. After that, after Waukesha County, there are no other people that can apply for water. Madison, Iowa, no one from outside. Texas, California, the water's never going to go there, if the Compact works. There's also a Supreme Court decision with regards to groundwater in the Lakeviewland Management District. Basically with that said, the DNR needs to consider the impacts, environmental impacts associated with groundwater alternatives. And when you look at the groundwater alternatives, there's significant environmental impact associated with those. So basically, it boils down to, we either have to use a groundwater source or go to Lake Michigan. Going to Lake Michigan has a lot less environmental impacts, as I'll show you. Uh-oh. What are we doing here? We're trying something. I'll ignore that, but then I can't see what I'm doing. Okay. We talked about that. Service area, there's been a lot of press about our service area, that Waukesha just wants a service area, we're doing this land grab, and we want to grow. That couldn't be the furthest thing from the truth. Yes, our service area is growing. One of the things that the Compact requires us to do is to define what our service area is going to be for the ultimate... For the ultimate water use in that area. So when we build, we define that service area based off of sewer pack projections, or they define it, and there's certain criteria that we have to follow. We have to be consistent with the sanitary sewer service area, we have to look at their planning documents, their regional planning documents, and there's a number of things that we have to look at, and they're all mandated by state law. So, yes, our service area is planned, there's plans to grow it, and we're going to service parts of the town of Waukesha, parts of the town of Delafield, parts of the town of Genesee, and parts of the city of Puywaki, but that was all defined per state law, and there is a larger area that we are going to ultimately serve. That being said, only 15% of that area is available for future growth. Most of that is already developed, so what it would be, would be areas that would switch over from groundwater, well, private well and septic, over to municipal supplies. There would be a small area for growth, majority of that area is residential growth. It would not be industrial or commercial growth, there's very, actually, under 1% that would be available for industrial and commercial growth. So the service area issue has been, has been an issue. However, we have gone with, we have followed state law, and the DNR is requiring us to follow that state law that was implemented at the time. In fact, it's one of our opponents that implemented, or that is basically complaining about the service area and our wanting to grow, is the person who actually mandated it in state law. The representative from Racine actually mandated that all utilities that are applying for water required to develop a water service, water supply service area, and that all utilities such as Oak Creek would have to develop a water supply service area by the year 2025. So he mandated it for all, for all the utilities throughout the state of Wisconsin, and he, I guess he liked the law before he didn't like the lie, yes. But anyway, then we use that to project to demands, and again, one of the things that the environmental groups are complaining about is the amount of water that we're requesting. We have gone through the projections, but one thing that we did do is we did look at the environmental impacts associated with our water supply when, if the impact, or if we used a lower water demand, and they were still higher than they would be if we went to Great Lakes for a diversion. So that being said, the state law says that reasonableness will be based off of environmental impacts, as well as other things, and when you look at it from an environmental impact perspective, there are very little, few, or few environmental impacts associated with the, with the Great Lakes water supply versus groundwater supply. And if you look at the Compact, what the Compact does is it cuts off, there's the number of people who reside in communities outside of the basin, it cuts off about 99% of the people in the United States from using Great Lakes water. So there's only about less than 1% of the people within the basin, or that are outside of the basin that would be eligible to, that would be eligible to apply for Great Lakes water. So that, we're talking about precedent here. What is that precedent? It's less than 1% of the people in the United States that have the ability to apply for Great Lakes water, and I would be able to show you, but I don't have, I don't have the map up there. And the Council of Great Lakes Governors has done a projection, they looked at how many people would apply within the next 20 years, and they figured that there was eight communities, four in a situation like New Berlin where they're straddling the divide, and then four like the city of Waukesha. So it's not a significant precedent, we're not talking about having hundreds of straws going to the Great Lakes. Without, that being said, alternatives to Great Lakes water have greater environmental, adverse environmental impacts, they're not sustainable, and there's an increase to public health risk. Also, all of our alternatives for groundwater are outside of the city limits, and that, which means there's greater impacts to other users. So if we go outside of our city, and we start drawing from shallow wells that are adjacent to private well supplies, private well and septic systems, we're going to draw the water down, and there's going to be impacts to those wells that are in those residential areas. And again, like I said, the DNR did analysis on a lower water volume, looking at the lowest, lowest amount of water that we could potentially use on our low band, and they still concluded that the impacts are significant, significantly greater than those of a Great Lakes alternative. That being said, we are going to discharge to the Root River, and I know that there's some questions about that, but one thing that I want to say is that it's not unique to discharge to a river. Out of the 500 municipal wastewater systems that are in the state of Wisconsin, 473 of them discharge to rivers, so it's not anything unique. In fact, we currently discharge to the Fox River now, so this is nothing new that we're talking to do. We are going to meet all the requirements that are set forth by the DNR, and they have strict requirements, including for phosphorus, which is one of the, one of the issues that some of the environmental groups raise. We are going to meet it, and we are going to improve the quality in the river, and also provide a base flow, because we'll be returning 100% of the water, but also provide a base flow, so down in Racine, at the fisheries, there was a fishery that was constructed in 1994, there would be water for, for the fish to travel upstream, salmon and trout to travel upstream to the fisheries, so they can harvest the eggs and improve the fishing quality in Lake Michigan. So there is a huge benefit to the fisheries, in fact, they wrote a memo specifically on this issue, saying that it would be a huge benefit to the Root River to have our water quality. It would add potentially up to 10,000 angling hours, and I'm not a fisherman, but it would add up to about 10,000 angling hours per year for fishermen in the Great Lakes. Like I said, there's low increase and low flows that we would increase and provide benefit to, but also during the high volume periods during that 100-year storm event, there would be less than a quarter of an inch increase in that, and that's within the error of the, of the model, so we can't even say that it's a quarter of an inch. It would most likely be less than that, but it would be, it's almost immeasurable by the, by the models that we use, because it is so low. Just to put that in perspective, we're going to return our average day, which last year was about 7 million gallons a day, and when that, when that river is flowing, there's, you know, 5 billion gallons a day going down that. So the amount of water that we're returning is very, very limited and very small. So in summary, Waukesha meets the exception standard. We cannot reasonably avoid the need for water through conservation. We believe there's, and the DNR has concluded in their environmental impact statement, that there's no other reasonable supply available to us. We're requesting a reasonable amount of water, and we're restoring the hydrologic conditions of the basin, meaning that right now we've reversed the flow of water in the deep aquifer from going towards Lake Michigan to going away from Lake Michigan, and pre-development, it used to flow towards Lake Michigan, discharge underneath and into Lake Michigan, now we actually pull water from underneath and out of Lake Michigan, and it comes towards the wells in Waukesha. So we'd be starting to restore that, and there would be no significant or individual or cumulative impacts to the Great Lakes, or waters and the water-dependent resources of the Great Lakes. The benefits, there would be no impact on lake levels, because we would be returning 100% of the water. It would enhance the habitat and fisheries, and it will also reduce the amount of radium and salt entering the environment. Almost all of our homes in Waukesha have water softeners right now, that when they recycle, they discharge salt to the wastewater stream, and that enters the Fox River, so you would be eliminating that when we have, when we get Great Lakes water from the city of Oak Creek. So what, how, what's the schedule moving forward? We re-formatted our application and submitted it to the DNR in 2013. We had, Waukesha held informational hearings, we had one here in Oak Creek in November of 2013. The DNR issued a draft EIS and technical review that was put out in June. They had public hearings on those drafts, on the draft EIS and technical review in August, and the comment period ended at the end of August. The final environmental impact statement and technical review will be, we're expecting that the DNR will be finished with that in December of this year, and then Wisconsin will submit that to the regional body in January. Once it gets to the regional body, excuse me, it would, they would go to the Compact Council, the Compact Council would review all the information and issue a set of findings. That set of findings then would be the findings that would be sent to the governors for them to vote on. Once it's voted on, then we'll, we'll have a yea or nay, and we believe that that'll happen by June of next year. Once that is done, then we'll, we'll proceed to finalize the contract with the city of Oak Creek, finalize the construction, or hire a program manager to work on the design and installation of the water main, and hopefully by the year, right now, we're projecting around 2020, we'd be hooked up and receiving Oak Creek water in the city of Waukesha. With that, I'll end and answer any questions that you might have.
Questions from the council. Mr. Degner, could you please sit down, right now? Thanks. Alderman Toman?
How does that, you mentioned there's a potential for another 1% of that water to go outside the, the area that's approved. What, what kind of potential does that have of increasing to 5, 10, 20%? What, are there...
The max, the maximum it would be, would be less than 1%. So if everyone that is outside of the basin that is eligible to apply, would be, would apply, it would be 1%. But remember, they would have to show a need like Waukesha is showing a need, and they would have to return the water to the Great Lakes, meaning there would be no impact to Great Lakes levels, and we're setting a precedent that they would have to go through an environmental impact statement process to prove that there is a need and to prove that the volume is reasonable, and that they are going to return the water in a reasonable manner.
So that 1% could change, is what you're saying?
No, the 1% could not change.
Could never change.
The land, the walls that were put up around the Great Lakes were put up when the Compact was agreed to. It cannot go beyond the straddling counties, and if I could, if I had a map up there, I could show you, but... So it can't go outside of those, I believe it's 72 counties that, that are eligible throughout the, all the Great Lakes states, Minnesota, Wisconsin, Illinois, well, not Illinois, because they're exempt, Indiana, Ohio, Pennsylvania, and New York. So there's, there's about 72 counties, and then it can go to those lines, and it can't go beyond those lines.
Okay. My other question is, how would the, how does the, the return, the discharge water that comes into the Root River, how does that work in the middle of winter? Is that something that creates a problem, or not?
No, there's, they're actually, the DNR has looked at the thermal impacts associated with the return of our water. There may have to be some things that actually we have to do with the return flow before we discharge it, but it would have no impacts on the Root River. Basically, the water, if, if the Root River ice is over, there would, the water underneath the River would be moving all the time. There's a layer of water that would be underneath that would be moving all the time.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Buciewicz?
My first question was kind of answered, it concerned the 1%, who could apply on a straddling, straddling line there. I just found it interesting, you said the water quality would improve, and I did sit on the Root River Watershed Committee, and really, people don't take into account everything that does wash into the rivers currently, and again, wells are big users of salt, and actually, it will improve the environment. That's, that was something I learned while I was sitting on that committee. So the discharge will be, will be an improvement to the environment, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, it'll actually oxygenate, oxygenate the water a little better. And just, just to verify what, what Dan said, I did have the pleasure of working down at the fish hatchery down in Racine that they did put in, and there were at times where it really dries up in there, in particular, to the point, they do have a dam, they use it for the fish, but they also do it to control that flow of water, so it doesn't completely dry up too. So, I think there's some validity in it, I don't believe it's a money grab or a growth thing on Waukesha's part. I think they're just caught in a very funny situation. My question is, I guess to our utility, I know we're set up to do this, what will be the impact to our citizens by, if we do indeed start to supply them?
Mike Sullivan, general manager of the Oak Creek Water and Sewer Utility. We are, we have the ability to expand our treatment facilities to accommodate the water that Waukesha is talking about. We don't currently have that capacity now, but we do have the room to expand, so we can provide them the water. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I guess...
So, okay.
Theoretically, I know you can't lay, lay a finger on it, because Public Service Commission's going to set rates and what have you.
Right.
Will we be in a situation where everybody's playing on a level playing field cost-wise, Oak Creek versus Waukesha?
Good point. As you mentioned, it is all up to the Public Service Commission. We would go in with the understanding that this, for Oak Creek is the benefit of Oak Creek, and that's really why we took on wholesale customers to begin with, to make the utility stronger for the Oak Creek rate payers. We believe that we can get a fair shake, if you will, with the Public Service Commission, I think we've done a lot of work in the last several rate cases. We also believe that the additional revenue coming in for the water that's being sold, because a lot of our infrastructure, that fixed infrastructure is still there, we project at this point a 25% decrease in rates to Oak Creek residents, so it's, it's very good for the residents that way.
Okay, thank you.
Other, go ahead. Other questions from the council? Mr. Degner, you got a question? Just real quickly, though, for the public, if you're going to speak on an item, you need to fill out one of these forms. It needs to say what item you're going to speak to, you're going to be allowed to speak once on the item, for three minutes. You'll speak only about that agenda item. If you go off, I'll ask, I'll ask you...
Ardern Degner, 85, 40 South...
Hold on, Mr. Degner. You can stay up there. I'll ask you to stay to the, stick to the topic of the agenda item, if you don't, I'll ask you politely to sit down. If you don't follow that instruction, I'll ask you to leave the council chambers. Go ahead, Mr. Degner.
Ardern Degner, 85, 40, South Pennsylvania Avenue. I've got a question about the city of Waukesha. I recall back in the 40s and 50s that they had a fountain spring house, and I used to go at these five different, at least five different springs. I still have a bottle of Bethesda Spring Water. What happened to all these springs?
Very good question. Well, with the urbanization of Waukesha, a lot of those springs have dried up and gone away. There is still one spring that is actually in, one of the springs is in Frame Park in the city of Waukesha, but there isn't the volume of water there within those springs to provide for the long-term for the city of Waukesha. We need a long-term supply that's going to be safe and reliable for the city, and those springs are just not an option for us.
Okay. How many years have you been working on this?
Myself, about 13.
Well, hopefully you can get it done at some point. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item five on our new business, it's a motion to retain the services of attorney Larry Haskin of Haskin-Carls's outside counsel to the city in an hourly late of $150, in an amount not to exceed the 2015 approved budget, as well as any future budgets established for these services. City administrator?
With the retirement of Larry Haskin as the city attorney, we have a unique opportunity to be able to capture the unique perspective, history, and knowledge that he has on some of the very complex projects that we have in the city, so we thought that it makes sense to tap into that for some of these large and complex projects, much as we've done with expertise from environmental attorneys and environmental engineers, Enviren, Godfrey and Khan, for some of these same projects. So we think that this can be a budget-neutral issue from where we've been historically, that we have some ability within the existing city attorney's budget to pay for some hourly services for Mr. Haskin as a outside counsel, and we have provision for that in the budget currently, and I provided some idea on the kinds of projects that he might be working on. We're looking to reach out to Milwaukee County for development efforts and discussions about some of the parks that the county has. Mr. Haskin could be very helpful in that regard, as he could with the environmental issues, the ownership issues, and the history of all of the properties that we have as part of our Lake Vista property, the Epic, the DePont property, the High Night property, the Canal property, the Borki property, and so on and so forth. We have found since his departure where our team has good history, as well as the current city attorney, we do not have the history that Mr. Haskin has on, on these projects. It's just as simple as that. We're also transitioning some of our staff resources into these projects, we're bringing some new people on, and that's going to be an educational and learning process for some of our employees as we start to move forward with the implementation. We've also got some of the complex agreements that we worked with on Drexel Town Square, the High Night property, and various other TIF districts, as well as TIF districts that might yet be formed. So, you know, I don't think I have to spend a lot of time in terms of why this makes sense. To me, it's a great opportunity for us, we see it as budget-neutral, and it would be a way for us to augment these projects and to bring some, some wisdom, knowledge, and expertise when, when needed. As we've done when we've brought in outside counsel, when we've brought in environmental folks in the past, they've generally worked at the direction of the attorney and the administrator with input from the mayor and the council. The council has historically set budgets for those kinds of things in a big picture, and that's what I'm suggesting here, that we work within the existing established budget, and any budgets that we would establish in the attorney's office moving forward, so that would be the extent of my comments.
And my comments would be that the record speaks for itself, there's no, no person in this building or in the city that knows all of the projects that we've been involved with for the past 30 years, as well as Larry Haskin does, and frankly, for that rate, it's a bargain. Questions from the council? Alderman Verhaelen?
I don't have questions, per se, I just, maybe you want to clear a few things up. Our current city attorney, Ms. Carls, works in, in partnership or in the office with Mr. Haskins at present, and I'm kind of wondering, a few years ago, Mr. Haskins put off his retirement to stay on and work through some of these things, but, you know, eventually, he knew he was going to make, make it to a point where he was, he was going to retire, and I was kind of wondering why he hasn't brought Ms. Carls up to speed on some of these things, so she could transition into some of these jobs in his stead. And I hate to see this, and it's nothing against Mr. Haskins at all, because I believe he is very knowledgeable on this stuff, but, you know, at what point in time is Ms. Carls going to be transitioned into this thing? Or are we going to hire Mr. Haskins on a long-term basis to do all of this work? That's one of my questions.
Yeah, I, Melissa Carls has been kept informed and apprised of all of these projects throughout her tenure, tenure with the city. There's very significant negotiations, familiarity with these projects, which I'm involved with as well. I do not have the particular expertise or perspective that Mr. Haskin has on those. There hasn't been any elimination, or there hasn't been any non-sharing of information. Actually, to have been involved in the negotiations wouldn't have made sense to have two attorneys from the city involved in the actual negotiations of these projects over the last seven years. There's always a loss of information if you're not as part of that, and again, that's unique information that Mr. Haskin has. So I don't think that there's been, and, well, I know that there's been an ongoing transfer of that information in communications. Ms. Carls has very good familiarity with these projects, but not at the level that Mr. Haskin has. And, and I think it would be a real mistake personally, and I understand the question, and I, and I see the perspective, to not take advantage of that unique history.
That, I guess that wasn't my point. My point was, at what point in time is our current city attorney, is she going to be expected to take over these tasks? And, because I, you know, it, depending on how many hours a year Mr. Haskins is hired for, you know, this could drag on for five, seven, 10 years, and at what point in time do we say, hey, our city attorney's been involved enough in these projects, she knows what, what, what it's going to take to bring these, some of these things to fruition, our startup new ones? At what point in time do we phase Mr. Haskins out and, and let our, let our actual new city attorney take over where he left off?
Yep, I, I better understand the question. I think the way you do that is on an annual basis, as you're establishing the budget and the role for that. We look at where we are on the projects, we look at the assistance that continues to be provided, whether it's from Mr. Haskin, whether it's from Enviren, whether it's from Godfrey and Khan, or if you remember, whether it was from John Antaramian. John Antaramian is no longer involved in these projects, there's a sunset with different specialties that we have and different approaches. When we get to a point where certain skill sets and information isn't needed, we drop that off. So we would be looking at that, the council would be looking at that, and hopefully asking the question on an annual basis when we set the budget, where we are in the process. I suspect it's going to be a number of years, we still have significant tasks ahead of us on some of these properties. I think primarily the High Night property and the Canal Beazer property are very much in the discussion stages right now, they're part of a very significant discussion with the city, the water utility, the owners and the DNR right now, they actually affect some of our water services as well, so we're bringing... So we're bringing in that discussion. But specifically, the answer would be, the council has an opportunity to look at that every year as we're setting the budget. Ask the question, we'll provide the answers, and you can make the determination whether you think the value is still there. I suspect that's going to be several years hence.
All right. I guess, leading up to some of the things, because I have a list of questions here, but leading up to your prior statement here with negotiations with Beazer and Highnight and whatever, is Ms. Carls going to be in a real part of these discussions, being that she's the city's legal representative at present? Or is Mr. Haskins going to continue with them?
She is. She is and has been.
All right. And then, one other thing, as it goes to services rendered, I guess, $150 these days is a pretty reasonable rate for attorney's fees, I know that. So I'm not getting at the fees part of it. But in a roundabout way, when you look at the budget, there's $75,000 in outside legal that could be budgeted to potentially Mr. Haskins. And then you look up on the page, there's another salaries, part-time, and I'm not sure, but I would assume that some of that would have been Ms. Carls when she was assistant city attorney for the meetings that she attended here and whatnot. So really, there's 75 plus 15, so there's $91,800 that Mr. Haskins could possibly accrue with basically a part-time job. Now, that's more money than our full-time city attorney's making. And I don't see where, you know, this is, this is, it should be scrutinized a little bit more, I guess, than that. And I don't know if that's just the way that the numbers came in, but breaks down to 10 hours a week for him to make $75,000. And Ms. Carls, I know, puts in a heck of a lot more time than that, and she's working for about the same money. And I don't, I think this is kind of a snub or a slap in the face to the person that's doing the bulk of the work for the city right now, and somebody that can, that's actually in the same office and just happens to be her boss, or was her boss when she was assistant district attorney, is now going to make more money than her, working on a part-time basis for the city at 10 hours a week.
I think we've identified where there are dollars, not the expectation that those are the dollars that are going to be spent. And there would be ongoing, again, discussion and reports. These projects tend to have high visibility to the community and to the council. And if we're spending that kind of time and those dollars are being earned, you will be involved in what the topics are. You'll know what they are, and they'll be needed.
All right. One other question, though, I do have is, how much, and I know you probably don't have those numbers tonight, but how much more is being spent with additional outside counsel, not associated with the city attorney's office on some of these projects? Over and above what we're planning to pay Mr. Haskins?
I-
And I'd like an actual number, if you could get it for me. I don't expect you'd have it today.
We can. I can give you, I can give you a cost to date of what I would tell you our due diligence numbers are, or would you like me to give you the actual cost?
The actual cost when you have time.
We'll provide it to you.
Alderman?
Yep.
Alderman Tomlin?
Just to say that I support this changeover, this expertise that Larry brings to the city. It's his guidance through all of these projects that we've been through lately is invaluable, and I support it 100%.
Okay. Other questions from the council? Alderman Bukiewicz?
Just kind of goes along with the ongoing costs. This year, we have some significant savings on the switch-over between Larry and Melissa going forward, which will take care of it through the end of the year, obviously. We're going to hit budget here the end of the month. We're going to discuss this. How much can we reasonably expect to budget? Because, you know, we've had talks and personnel about other departments needing people and where the money's coming from, and now we're adding yet more positions. I do think it's a worthwhile endeavor, without a doubt. But again, how do we wrap our mind around how much time Mr. Haskins is going to need going forward in a budgeted year? And when we're out of money, are we done with that position? How are we going to address this and handle it? Because it's very time-consuming and intricate, some of the stuff they get into.
One of the options that we have available to us, in addition to these general fund monies, are there, potentially, we have TIF districts that are part of these projects. We intend to have a TIF district, for instance, at the lakefront that will be going through a project plan discussion and through a review. We can take the professional fees that we have necessary to put the projects together, and those can be charged to the districts. So that's another source that we have, should we need it. I suspect we are not going to see very huge costs on these, but it all depends what we find. We've been surprised more than once on those properties out there. We've been at it not quite as long as Dan was for the lakefront, or the water in Waukesha, but I think we've been at it for seven years actively at this point. And we do get surprises from time to time. So I think reasonably, you're probably looking at, I can comfortably say, within the existing budget, because of changes in health insurance and wages, you probably have about $50,000 there. I wouldn't necessarily count on the additional outside counsel. And there's potential TIF dollars. I think that should be adequate to cover what I can reasonably foresee and expect.
Thank you. Alderman Guzakowski?
I think this is just value-added. You know, Larry, Attorney Haskins brings a history, he's got knowledge, and what he brings to the table would take away from the next attorney that you'd potentially need to bring aboard to have to learn the history and get up to speed. So I think we're going to be far, far ahead of the game.
Alderman Gale?
Yeah, I just want to echo my colleagues. I think it will turn out to be money well spent for Larry's expertise and his experience with the relationships we've had ongoing in these multi-year projects. Continuity in these projects and in these relationships is the hardest things for organizations to maintain and manage their way through when you have transitions like Larry's retirement. So I think the fact that we could actually tap his resources moving forward and review him on a periodic basis, I think is a very appropriate way for the city to spend these dollars with these projects.
Okay. Alderman Tomlin?
Is there, is there any cost with, associated with Melissa having to retrain Larry on this job? No? I wanted to get a smile out of you, Larry. Next.
City Attorney Carls?
If I might just explain to the council, and I think that Alderman Verhalen, in terms of this, I have no hesitation that, in my role, I appreciate the opportunity to serve the city, and I will do my best. And I have done my best in the years that I've been an assistant city attorney. So I recognize any concerns or hesitations moving forward in terms of what this means, in terms of my capacity, and then what any outside legal counsel, and here Attorney Haskins, would provide. And it's certainly in the city's best interest. I guess the point that I wanted to make is, in the past many years that I've been an assistant for the city and working in concert with Larry Haskins, when he was city attorney, there's quite a number of levels on a given day in terms of the operations of the city. And I think that in terms of my role as assistant city attorney in the past and city attorney now, I just wanted to point out that there's certainly the day-to-day operations. I mean, in terms of records requests, things that come up on a given day that need to be addressed at that moment. There are also the bigger projects on an ongoing basis in terms of meetings that take us out of the office or involve other city staff where we need to meet on a staff basis and then, again, with other parties. So in terms of it, I don't think that there's a question in terms of the breadth of knowledge that Attorney Haskins can provide with respect to these city projects. He has expertise that he's lent to the projects that are contemplated here for him to work on, in which he had been involved with for many years. I think it's important to recognize that in terms of his understanding of the personalities and the dynamics, in terms of negotiations that have had to this point, that's critical in terms of relationships that have been forged. And that would be true for any parties to work that goes on for the city. In terms of where we are now, certainly, the transition getting to where we are, certainly ready to continue taking the helm. And I appreciate any assistance that Attorney Haskins can provide. And I know that we have outside counsel for other specific matters. So I think that in terms of this piece for specific city projects, that's certainly going to enhance the continuity of what's already in place in terms of what's best for the city. Thank you.
Other comments or questions from the council? Alderman Krukowski?
I think it goes without saying that Attorney Haskins developed his expertise over a very, very long time, and has used that expertise in these very complicated issues we have. And I think it would be short-sighted of the city not to tap into that experience to allow, I mean, to let him assist us in bringing these matters to a close. So that's all I have to say.
Okay. Motion on five.
Gale, a move to retain the services of Attorney Larry Haskins of Haskins-Carls as outside counsel to the city in an hourly rate of $150-
Sit down, please.
-in an amount of not to exceed the-
If you're going to speak, you got to fill out, sorry, Ken. If you're going to speak to this council, you're going to fill out a form and submit it up here with the agenda item that you're going to speak to. Thank you. Go ahead, Ken.
Sorry. Continuing in the amount not to exceed the 2015 approved budget, as well as any future budgets established for these services.
Guzakowski, a second?
Roll call.
Alderman Verhalen?
No.
Tomlin?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Krukowski?
Aye.
Bukiewicz?
Aye.
So you've indicated you want to speak on this issue. You've got three minutes. Name and address for the record.
Rosemarie Anderson, 3920 East Ryan Road. I want to know if we are still going to hire like Godfrey &amp; Con for the same services that we currently do?
Go ahead.
We would continue to utilize the services of Godfrey &amp; Con when we need them, and we use them for environmental legal services. We use them from time to time on complex land transactions.
All right. So are we also going to get an assistant city attorney for Melissa?
No. We have assistants that work in the prosecutor's office. If I said that correctly, Melissa?
You did. We feel that this is, we're appropriately staffed right now. So in terms of it, our bases are covered, in terms of court matters, in terms of daily operations, and in terms of the needed assistance on a particular basis at the-
So we have a clerk, attorney, hired in police budget or out of your budgets, or where?
Our budget.
Your budget. Okay, thank you. And then, Mr. Haskins is basically going to serve as counsel to the city administrator. Is this correct? Our city administrator needs an attorney now?
Jerry, how would you describe the-
I would describe that the actions of Mr. Haskins would be primarily guided, actually, by the city attorney. That's historically how we've done it. The attorney's office guides when we have outside counsel and works closely with them, whether it's labor counsel, whether it's expertise in land matters or environmental. And I have always been closely involved in those decisions and part of it. And at appropriate times, we keep certainly the mayor and council president and periodically make reports to the council in terms of those services. So that's the way it has historically worked. That's the way I would expect it would continue to work.
It is not the way it has historically worked.
Last question.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, we got, we had a roll call on that?
Yep.
Okay. Item six. Item six is a consideration of, welcome back, Larry, by the way. Item six is consideration of resolution number 11653-100615, approving an amendment to the tax incremental District Number 11 Finance Development Agreement, HAS Project Second District. City Administrator?
We, the city attorney and myself, met with representatives from HSA. And HSA would be building the building for Frederd, that the Drexel Town Square project. We met with them, and Melissa did a good job in terms of the background to update their plans. We have seen a growth in the size of that building, which has prompted them to take a little more time to complete their project planning. We are looking for an extension of the notice-to proceed date that's in their development agreement. Right now, that notice-to proceed date is November, or September 30th, which has just passed, and we're looking to move that into next year at the request of HSA to March 15th of 2016. As part of those discussions, the completion date does not change. It remains December 31st of 2017. We have seen the footprint grow, which we think is good on that site. They have seen better market indicators in the Oak Creek market than they were expecting to. So we thought that that was a very positive discussion. One of the other things that the amendment has in it is a closing date in terms of the property, which would be before the end of the year. That is a request that we have, as well as Wispark, that the HSA complete that property sale before the end of this year. But they're not required to provide the detailed site plans and layout and the notice-to proceed and exactly what their Phase One project will be until, again, the previously identified date, March 15th.
Jerry, have they agreed with that?
They have not. We've had that discussion. Their attorney is in the office, the audience here today. They have discussed that. We think that that's in our best interest. We'd like that to be in the agreement. I think if we put it in and they would object to it and want to change, they would have to come back to the council as an amendment to the agreement.
Done?
Yep.
Reminder to push your button. Alderman Verhalen?
Two questions. With the added space that they may be going to be anticipating, are they looking at any other land acquisitions? Are they, can they fit any larger building or whatever they're planning on in the land that they currently own, or they're going to own?
There may be considerations on another parcel within that site.
Will that affect any of the other outlots that are currently laid out on the total Drexel Town Square?
Only positively, from what we can see. And we just mentioned the possibilities to them of additional land. And quite frankly, the additional land that's there is the property that's east of the city hall. There's two and a half acres there. And if that could be used to be built into their program, that could benefit everyone. And I'm not sure that they're even seriously looking at it, but they're at the limits in their property site. I think it's fair to say that their analysis and their program really kind of maxes that space out.
And then, one other question. It mentions, in the fiscal impact, about the, the collection of the increment, about how much increment is the city going to lose by the delays that are being anticipated now? And what happens if we get delayed, say, into next summer or next fall?
The way the increment would work is if the construction had started in December this year, the property is valued as of January 1. So there would be very little value as of January 1, 2016. So if the construction starts in the spring, the next valuation will be January 1, 2017. So I suspect it's the potential for that three months' worth of work. That's really the only loss of potential.
At present. That's if they don't lay it again.
At present.
Okay. All right.
Alderman Krukowski?
Alderman Verhalen asked my question about the fiscal impact. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Bukiewicz?
If I could just comment on that, which well could be offset by the increase in size of the facility.
All right. Go ahead, Dan.
Damn, I forgot what I was going to say.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. No, given the challenges, I'm not, I'm not so concerned with the day they actually stick a shovel in the ground. I'm more concerned with the quality of the project itself than the speed it gets in. The few months we're going to give on the fiscal impact doesn't bother me. You said you want to close on the land by December 31 of 15, correct?
Of this year, yes.
Right. And that guarantees that their square footage, the- And that, that guarantees that their square footage, the, what they intend, I guess the value of what they're gonna put in will be included in that land sale or dictated that way?
No.
I guess what I'm saying is, doing their study, we always anticipate they're gonna expand it. What if they contracted from 135,000 down and go, well, we don't quite need the parking structure now? Things have changed.
The, the agreement contemplates all of those and it creates a range of sizes and the city's assistance is premised on the size and it ranges currently now in the agreement from 75,000 square feet to 135,000 square feet. And there's a formula for assistance. The assistance is primarily for the parking garage, a 550-car parking garage in the city's dollars towards that are based on the size of the facility. So the land sale wouldn't dictate what the, the site plan would be. The notice to proceed in the agreement contains the detail of what the phase would be. So the land sale doesn't do that, the notice to proceed does. So if the land sale takes place, let's say on December 20th, we wouldn't necessarily know at that time exactly what the size of the building would be, exactly what its layout and look would be. We would see that and it's required under the notice to proceed. Again, with, that's gonna follow in three months. So what it does is it commits the project, but not specifically what's gonna take place. It's the notice to proceed that does that.
Okay, thank you.
Did I miss any of that, Melissa? I think that's all correct.
No, I, I guess the main thing was I wanted to know that proportionally the TIF went with the value.
It, it does.
Okay.
And there's a, there's a formula that's based on that, that the, the entire increment doesn't go unless they build up to the 135,000.
Ken, I think I knew that. I just wanted to make sure I was clear on it. Thanks.
Good question, Dan. Anything else from the council? Motion on six.
Bukavitch will make a motion that the common council adopt resolution 11653-100651, resolution approving the amendment to the tax increment District Number 11 Finance Development Agreement with HSA Project.
Kukowski, you'll second.
Can I just clarify for the record? It's resolution 100615?
Yes. I'm sorry, did I read that wrong?
Yeah, you're, you're good.
That's okay. Alderman Toman?
You didn't let me see.
No, no, I'm confused. You, you stated the date, didn't you? It's not the, that's not the resolution number.
The clerk clarified it. Right? You clarified the number?
It was, I'm sorry, Alderman Bukavitch read 100651, so I just want to clarify at the end of the resolution.
Oh, okay. I got you.
We're good.
Okay. Aye.
Would you like to say roll call?
No, that's all right.
Alderman Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kukowski?
Aye.
Bukavitch?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
You wanna do both, John? All right. Item seven is a consideration of resolution number 11652-100615 relating to industrial development revenue bond IDRB financing for Susie's Cream Cheesecakes, Inc. City Administrator?
This current city business is looking to amend the bonds that had previously been approved. Looks like they're trying to get a longer debt schedule in place and they're also trying to take advantage of fixing those rates at a, at a longer time. So there's two purposes here, fixing the, the attractive rates that they have for a longer period of time and then amending the debt schedule. This resolution in the bond language would be subject to any further tweaks necessary by the city attorney as well as bond counsel and I think that's right, right in the resolution.
Sorry about that. I was talking, having two conversations and is there a representative from the bank here? Okay. Just to tell you in case we need you. Questions from the council? Seeing none? Comment from?
See?
Okay, why don't you come up? Name and address for the record and who you represent.
Twice now. You're not paying attention.
Your button, there, it finally showed up. Go ahead.
Brandon Simick from Bank First National 2600 Kohler Memorial Drive in Sheboygan.
All right. City Attorney, then Alderman Gale.
Since this is a request being made to the city, I suggested that it might be helpful since council is here, if we could just have an explanation in terms of the request.
The, the, the request is to accommodate the borrower's request on the bank's behalf. The original bond language had a initial reset date for three years. They're trying to take initiative on the attractive low interest rates that are still out there and fix the term for a longer period.
Okay, that's sufficient?
Sufficient for me.
All right. Alderman Gale?
I just, for kicks and giggles, I think the whereas's and where it for's on the back of the page one actually explained that the holders of 100% of the bonds have actually agreed to this, these modifications, right? Yeah, so.
Correct.
We're good to go, basically.
All right. Any other questions, comments, motion?
Gail will move to approve resolution.
Hold on one second. We didn't put number seven down, but I'll add it to your list. Go ahead.
I note in the backup that it says that they're gonna have a slightly higher interest rate?
You typically pay a little more to get, extend your term, yeah.
Okay. And because we're gonna extend it five more years, this is, are we then going to lose taxes, tax revenues for five more years?
This is not in the TIF, Rosemary. These are industrial revenue bonds.
Oh, so that's a different, that's, 'cause I thought it was some kind of a TIF too. All right. And then I have another question. It mentions in here a Howell Avenue Oak Creek Limited Liability Corporation? Is that another one of the city private partnerships?
No.
They're the owner of the building.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
The city attorney said no.
All right. So Susie Cuse is separate though from that Howell Avenue Oak Creek LLC.
Is there a point to your question?
Yes.
Is that the question? Are they separate? Is that, I'm sorry, Rosemary, is the question, are they separate? Yes, they are separate.
So Susie Cuse doesn't own it, this LLC does.
And I, maybe can I give you a little bit of information if it might be helpful?
Please.
I don't know. So in terms of the background, so these IRBs can be issued by a municipality to finance construction or equipping or enlargement of certain facilities. These are municipal bonds, but they're not obligations of this municipality. So in terms of it, it's not the city of Oak Creek that issues them. No tax money is required to pay the interest on them or to retire them as they mature. The bonds don't affect our debt limit in any way.
Okay.
So I, you know, if there are additional questions, I, you know, in terms of it, I'm trying to assist. I think it's, it's a different sort of item coming before you, but in terms of it, we are lending our name, but not our credit. So in terms of that, that assists the borrower in terms of what they're trying to do and essentially the idea and in practice, it's to enhance the community in terms of the city of Oak Creek in terms of that development. So it is at a higher interest rate, that's why they're coming back here, but it doesn't affect the city in any way in terms of their debt. And I defer to the finance director if there were more specific questions.
Quickly, Jerry.
The, the bonds are issued by the state and the city lends its name to them to provide an advantage to a local business. That's, 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 long and short, that's what these are set up for.
Sounds good. Alderman Gale, you started to make a motion.
Certainly. A Gail will move to approve resolution 11652-100615 relating to industrial development revenue bond IDRB financing for Susie's Cream, Susie's Cream Cheesecakes, Inc.
Kuzakowski, you'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kukowski?
Aye.
Bukavitch?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
I'd have made his a motion to award a contract to Tower MRL, Inc. for the construction and installation of a 145-foot communications tower at Fire Station 1, 255 East Centennial Drive in the amount of $176,445.69 in the third district. Who's taking it, Caesar? Jerry?
The, the existing cell tower here at the, at the back of the Fire Station 1, it's 125-foot cell tower with the sale of this property to the school district. We need to move our facilities to network connection and a new facility. The new facility was approved when we approved the building plans for the Fire Station 1. The tower was due to be constructed. It's, it's on the plans at about 35 feet on the east side of Fire Station 1, partways back in the building there. So it's not right at the front, but it's about halfway back in the building. So it's between the woods and, and the building itself there. There is a stakeout there, if any of you've noticed, a lathe with a flag on it to give you an approximate place for where that tower is gonna be located. It will house six fire and police antennas and street department antennas on it and also the city data network, which is a redundant data network, which when the, if the fiber would ever get cut or something would happen with it, that data network would be our secondary backup. So that would take over.
Okay. Alderman Bukavitch?
Caesar, is there a possibility that another user such as one of the popular cellphone companies would want to utilize that tower and we could generate revenue?
Correct. Right now, we currently do not have any signed additional carriers or users out there, but we do have some interest already in co-locating on that tower, that there might be other carriers that would co-locate, co-locate on that tower. And we do have room for up to three additional carriers that could go on there in addition to the city equipment that's gonna go on there.
Okay. How many carriers are on the tower that's out here?
There are currently two carriers on there and then our antennas are below the two carriers at the 100 and the 90-foot level.
And I don't want to go into a big discussion about that tower, but there, has there been any change in the discussion on what's gonna happen with that? Without going into a ton of detail on it?
There, there isn't any commitment on any part.
Okay. That's all I need.
Not exactly yet. The school district and the city are talking about along with the carriers there.
Okay. Questions, other questions? Alderman Gale?
Just for education for the audience and TV viewing, this was originally the tower that was projected to potentially go at the police station that we had a significant study done for that proved to be non-economical. Jerry, may you just spend a moment to tell the rest of the council, in fact, what the state trust fund loan program is and how it's gonna be financed inside that? We had significant discussions on these and a couple of the projects at last week's CIP meeting and maybe just shed a little light on the financing method here.
Yeah, this project is actually included in the 2015 budget at a $200,000 level. We expect that we're gonna be issuing a, a number of projects and financing through the, the state revolving loan fund. This is one of those projects that we'll actually fund through that, through that state revolving loan fund. So we'll be paying the, the state, I think this is over a four-year period for this as well as some other large projects that we have, including the councils at the police department. So it's already in the 2015 budget, it's been planned for and as you can see, very good bids that came in. We had a nice grouping of the bids. I think last week, Mike demonstrated a, a very far-flung grouping. This is what you like to see with the bidders, you know, within a pretty decent range and a good number of the bidders for the project.
Good. Alderman Verhaelen?
Just one question. What was the original height design on the tower? Or is it the same as it was or was it, was it planned for 110 feet and?
We've been able to go anywhere from the existing, we're almost at the exact same elevation at this site that we are at the current city hall. So we could work at the same height at 125, but what we did is applied for the maximum height that we could get from the FCC and that's the 145 that you see there. To us, it didn't make any sense not to get additional tower coverage if we could have. We could have gone to the 125, but I think this is a prudent move on our part.
All right.
Any other questions? Motion?
Verhaelen makes a motion to award a contract to Tower MRL Incorporated for the construction and installation of 145 communications tower at Fire Station 1, 255, or yeah, 255 East Centennial Drive in the amount of $176,445.69.
Bukavitch, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kukowski?
Aye.
Bukavitch?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Item nine is a motion to approve a one-time gifting of non-value city hall library supplies to local nonprofit agencies. Who's taking this?
I will and then Catherine can make additional comments. As we've been preparing the, the city hall for the move to the new facility, we've got an online auction that's going on. So if you haven't gotten your bids in, get them in, that's still live and going on for items that didn't seem to be appropriate for the online auction, many of which you can see in the back of the room. They're really small items that have little or no value, really can't take pictures of them very well or put them online. We have very fiscally conservative employees. We really would hate to throw those things away. So we thought it made a good sense to offer those to nonprofit agencies with the community. Under our procedures, the council needs to declare that, that process. So we think that's a good use of things that still have value, not value to us, but made to various organizations in the community. We would expect to have a one-day pickup for that, 26th, 27th?
Most likely the evening of October 27th.
Okay, so it would be after the completion of our online auction and then we would provide the opportunity for those agencies to come in and look at the items on the table and be able to receive those pending the council's approval.
Okay. So we're giving them away to the qualified nonprofits?
We do and I think it makes sense for some of the agencies in the community.
Yeah, I looked through it, there's some good stuff there. Any questions? Alderman Verhaelen?
Yeah. What happens to any items that are left after the nonprofits?
Those will belong to the demo contractors and they will either take them and try to get value for them. If they don't, otherwise it'll be landfillled.
Well, the reason, the reason I asked and, and one of the persons that was in the audience runs a secondhand store and I thought maybe we could forward some of that stuff to interested parties.
Actually, one of, one of the things that's out there is while some of the things that may not have value to us, they actually have value to the demo contractors, the discussions Mike has had with them, is part of their bid is based on what would remain here. Now I'm more talking about some of the equipment and things like that.
Right. Well, I was, I was referring to furniture, chairs, anything like that with the, happened to be, you know, chalkboards, anything like that that happened to be left. Locks.
Yeah. We, I, I would have no, the, the problem becomes getting them through, having the staff there to bring them through the building and then the potential liability out there.
Any other questions? Just need a motion.
Gail will move to approve a one-time gifting of non-value city hall library supplies to local nonprofit agencies.
Kuzakowski, you'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kukowski?
Aye.
Bukavitch?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Item 10 is a motion to concur with the mayor's reappointments or appointments as follows. A, Board of Health, three-year term to expire nine of 2018. Gary Hints, which is item A. 10B is Board of Housing Zoning Appeals, three-year term to expire April of 2018. Thomas Bauer. Any questions? Motion?
Gail will move to concur with the mayor's reappointments, appointments as listed.
Kukowski, you'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bukavitch?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Item eleven is a motion to approve the vendor's summary report in the amount of $3,521,619.95. Finance director is here to answer any of your questions.
We have item number nine, uh, just pointing out for the residents and the viewers, that's two corporate contractors, CCI, that is over $2 million of that 3.5. So that includes our final payment to CCI for the fire station as well as a very large payment for the city hall library. Um, Alderman Bukavich, at the last meeting, you requested that I report this meeting to you and the council about the last three years of our belo-veter bukama Olson bills. So in 2013, we, uh, spent $178,000. In 2014, $126,000 and in 2015, to date, we're at $111,000 for that vendor. I know Alderman Verhaelen, you asked for the other vendors tonight, so we'll most likely send that out in an email for everybody. Um, but this really goes in conjunction with some of the things that we have expected with the bringing on of the human resources manager and reducing some of these attorney bills as we go on.
Let's keep that trend going. 178, 126, 111, so.
I can't promise, but I'll try.
Let's shoot for that. Any other questions? Alderman Gale?
Just, uh, Mayor, just to, you can point out for folks that they're on the backside, there is actually a significant payment for our new lakefront road on top of the bluff is in that pack, payment package as well. So, um, when the folks get a chance to take a look, see it's a very nice project in, in the midst of commencing.
All right, motion?
Gale, move to approve the vendor's summary report in the amount of $3,521,695.
Kirkowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Underwater and sewer utility, item twelve is a consideration of resolution number 11651-100615, acquiring property at 3953 East American Avenue in the fourth district. Is that you guys? Okay, patient. Always patient. Appreciate that. Yes, sir.
Ron Pritzloff, Oak Creek Utilities, utility engineer. Um, when we first started thinking about this during our CT tank compliance project, uh, as a natural, uh, extension or for, uh, further improvements down the line, as we went through the process to rezone the property to the north, which was existing city property, uh, we really started to, uh, engage the property owner a lot more and they can attest to that. And as we went through the, the certified survey map process, that's one of the things really kind of started to engage for us with the property owners, um, as a way for us to, uh, expand to the, not expand, but improve to the north. So, um, as part of that, we, uh, we initiated some, uh, some due diligence efforts in terms of getting, uh, getting the property appraised as well as having an environmental assessment done. Uh, we analyzed the soils and wa, and, uh, groundwater, uh, found no contaminants, uh, subsequently had a meeting with the property owners. Uh, we did negotiate what we think is a fair deal with them and, uh, at least we did at the time. I don't know if that still stands at this point, but, um, at that time, that the last time we talked, uh, we had a, an agreement in place and that it's reflected in this document, uh, that you're, that you're looking at right now. So, um, again, the property is, if you know where interstate erecting is, it's just to the east of interstate erecting on American Avenue, uh, east of the railroad tracks there, uh, in between the city-owned property and interstate erecting. So, um, that should give you a little bit of a geographical sense of where it's at. And, um, like I said, we, uh, we negotiated this deal with the, uh, with the property owners. We think it's fair and good to go.
You guys good? From what I heard, you were fantastic to work with. Good to hear. Questions from the council? Alderman Bukavich.
No, I just wanted to comment the same thing. They had come in here before and when they were expanding and the property owner came in and, uh, this particular couple was just excellent to work with the utility, uh, very patient, very understanding, and then obviously it took this direction. But again, I just wanted to comment, you don't get a lot of residents that are, uh, cooperative all the time when they're, when it's affecting their property. So kudos to them.
Thank you. Alderman Gale?
Yeah, just, um, for the benefit, I mean, this benefits both parties. Obviously, a, a nice negotiated settlement for the property owners, but for the water utility and the city as a whole, uh, this, uh, provides, uh, you know, not necessarily now, but in the future is going to provide, uh, a lot of opportunity for us to do some, some projects in the future that make more sense and make sure we have the room to do them.
Alderman Toman?
Uh, Ron, does, does interstate erecting have any issues with this expansion at all?
As far as I know, no. Uh, we actually engaged them at one point. Uh, had no interest in, in working with us in terms of, uh, property acquisition. Um, they're fully aware of, um, of what we, we have planned for our CT tank compliance project. So they're, they're aware of what's, uh, what we plan on building in terms of, you know, a new high service and the new storage and whatnot. So, uh, they've not, uh, during the course of that engagement, they, they were able to see the plans and see what we had planned for the property, uh, at that time, which, you know, we didn't have, uh, we hadn't, we hadn't done any action to try and acquire, um, the property at 3953, but they, they didn't express any objection at that point. So, um, from that perspective, unless their opinion has changed since we last talked.
No, I just wanted to know if you heard anything, because I haven't.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Motion?
Toman will make a motion to adopt resolution number 11651, acquiring property at 3953 East American Avenue.
Gale, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Oops, excuse me, aye.
Is that everybody?
Yeah.
Good luck to you guys.
That wasn't you, Ron.
Thanks for being so nice. All right, moving through engineering, a quick tour through engineering with Mike Simmons. Item thirteen is a motion to award the city building site, buildings and site demolition contract to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder, Gunderson Excavating Inc. for a total lump sum bid price of $268,000. Project number 15002B in the third district. Mr. Simmons?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is basically phase two of the overall site, uh, and building demolition project that is to follow, um, very closely after, uh, we vacate these buildings to the, to the new site. This includes the city hall building, the library, fire station, uh, one, and, um, the parking garage here on this, uh, campus, uh, as well as all the, uh, pavements, um, uh, associated with the site. Um, uh, basically the council will remember, will recall that we, uh, awarded the hazardous materials abatement contract at the, at the last meeting. That work is, uh, um, that those contracts have been sent out. That work is to take place, um, beginning late October at the earliest, but in the, into, uh, November and basically through the month of November, um, very, very shortly thereafter and even, uh, some concurrence with, with that work, uh, the, the building, uh, will be, the buildings will begin to be, uh, raised in their entirety, uh, in preparation for, uh, the vacation of the site and the, uh, school building project that is to follow, um, early 2016. So basically this is the, uh, the, the plans and specifications were prepared and advertised for bid. We did receive 11 bids, um, and, uh, you, you see them here before you. Uh, as, as Jerry had referenced, we've got a bit of a range on, on the bids. Um, we've got, uh, a, a good cluster, um, uh, on, on the low end and, uh, um, a couple of outliers on the, on the, on the extreme high end. Um, at any rate, the, the, the bids were structured such that there was a base bid, which is, uh, complete raising of these buildings in accordance with city ordinance, which requires that buildings be taken down to one foot below grade and any, uh, foundations and basins backfilled with, uh, clean, uh, fill. Uh, alternate one was, uh, to go further and that was to remove all, all footings and foundations, uh, basements, uh, in their entirety and then to backfill, uh, the void with, um, engineered material, uh, compacted in lifts and that is in preparation for the, the building project that's to follow. Um, reason that the bids were structured like this is because there is, uh, a, a little bit of a, a ongoing debate on the entity that is responsible for the removals of the foundations. And so, uh, proceeding this way, we've got a defined dollar figure associated with that work. Um, so, so basically the, the recommendation is to go with the, the low bidder, which is Gunderson Excavating. There was, uh, one issue as we read the bids. Gunderson did not, uh, note on their bid form, uh, acknowledging addendum number one. They did acknowledge very shortly after the bid that that was, that they were in possession of then, um, number one, that that did factor into their bid and that they understand that, that, uh, uh, their bid would encompass all of, all of that work. So, uh, there was discussions with the city administrator, with the city attorney, um, uh, with, uh, our consultant that, that, uh, helped us put the plan, plan, uh, the bid, uh, specifications together. Uh, and then of course the correspondence with the, the apparent low bidder, uh, Gunderson. And they replied via email, um, basically the message that, um, Denham received and included in their bid. Um, so basically, uh, the recommendation is to proceed with, uh, Gunderson and, uh, have this work awarded.
Alderman Kirkowski?
Mike, uh, what is the difference between, I have two questions. Um, first one is what is the difference between clean fill material and engineered material compacted to a specified density?
Clean fill material could, could be, uh, clay material that, that is, uh, just deposited into, into the excavation. Um, uh, uh, could be just loosely compacted and then, and then filled over. And, and that's, uh, not unusual in, in some, uh, raises of, of buildings, particularly residential, uh, you know, old homes. Um, and then that generally may settle a little bit over time. Uh, engineered material would be a, a graded, uh, crushed stone generally. Uh, it could be earth and material as well, so long as it is, is graded and can be compacted, uh, to a certain density.
Say we don't go with the option that includes removal of the foundations, um, not being an engineer or involved in construction and not knowing exactly what the school district has in mind, uh, what happens if, uh, they suddenly start digging for their building and they come into the foundations? Uh, are we going to be, uh, responsible for removing that stuff at a later date? Do they have to work around it? Uh, what happens with things like that?
From, uh, the meetings that I've been at, I, they would have a big problem with that. They have expressed that. Um, there's been, there is a, uh, an agreement between the city and the school district and there is a difference of opinions on which entity is responsible for that. It would be most efficient to do that while this contractor is mobilized and on-site. And, um, I, I would recommend that, that work proceed under this contract and the legalities of who's responsible, um, worked out and those costs be rectified sometime after that work is completed.
Okay, I have a third one. Um, how far, how far down is the foundation by chance? I mean, it's probably irrelevant.
Yeah, it's about, about eight feet.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Alderman Verhaelen?
Lost my train of thought here. Uh, never mind.
Alderman Bukavich?
Um, Mike, just, just kind of clarify on this, this alternate. So he bid a base bid, didn't put in the alternate, but then all of a sudden we have a listing here. The alternate came through and then there's the alternate plus the base and we're okaying the alternate plus the base tonight.
Right, and we're, and we're.
What was his base bid? The, the, the 268? Well, how did they break out the addendum? How did they figure there was that 36 in there from the base? I mean, when you opened it, was it 232 or was it 268?
Uh, there was, it was, it was, we're talking about two different things. We're talking about an alternate bid, which they did submit, and we're talking about an addendum, uh, to the bid documents that they failed to acknowledge, uh, having in their possession. Okay? And ba, basically the addendum, uh, uh, encompassed, um, uh, it, it addressed questions that were brought up during the, uh, pre-bid meeting.
Okay.
And, um, and, and did add to some of the scope of the work. Um, it also removed from some of the scope of the work on some clarifications that were, uh, attached in that addendum, uh, language. So. So, so he, he was in possession of the paperwork from what he's telling me, from what our, uh, engineering consultant is telling us, because they were the ones that, uh, distributed that material to him when he came and, and picked it up. Um, uh, so basically he's saying, yes, I was aware of all that, of all the language in the addendum. I incorporated that into my bid. And again, the bid, we did get the alternate bid that was read and, uh, at the public reading of the.
Okay.
At the bid letting, so.
All right, thank you.
Good. Alderman Verhaelen?
One question. Um, what is the anticipated or required completion date on this thing?
The, the completion date is, uh, December 31st of this year. There is a, um, provision in the contract that if the, uh, the new city tower is not operational, um, that, or, or such date that the new tower is operational, they have two weeks after that date to re, uh, demolish the fire station. Right now, the fire station houses the, uh, the radios. And so that building needs to remain, uh, intact, uh, until that new tower is operational.
Okay, I guess that would lead to the next question. When's the anticipated completion date?
The completion date from my, my understanding, the contractual completion date for the tower is December 31st of this year. So, the contractor, the contractor could potentially have to work very quickly to make that, uh, December 31st, uh, completion date. If, if the tower, if the tower is operational December 15th, all buildings will be demolished and, and, and contract completed by the 31st.
So, so if the tower goes to the 31st, they've still got two weeks, so it could be second week of January.
That's correct.
Um, audience member Mike Brant has requested to speak.
Thank you, council. Uh, my name is Mike Brant. Um, I'm demolition vice president, uh, operations for New Berlin Grading.
Address for the record, too.
My address is North 59, West 28135, Ainsworth Road, Sussex.
Thanks.
The reason that I wanted to come up and address the council tonight is, um, I was second bidder with New Berlin Grading on the overall, uh, bid of 11 bidders. And on that day, uh, that we had to walk through, granted, the walkthrough was not mandatory, but, uh, Mr. Gunderson was not at that walkthrough. Um, I know pretty much everybody that was there after 38 years in the industry. Um, so he, in essence, came and got a private walkthrough, which is the prerogative of the city, obviously. But when you're bidding in our industry, um, and granted, I understand completely that, uh, city has the choice and whatnot to pick who they want to have their, do the, do their work. But in the bidding process, it's pretty common that, uh, you know, bids are all read out loud and it is addressed that you have a bid bond. It is always addressed that you, uh, that you mark on your paperwork how many addendums the city has or the engineers have sent out, which is a pretty important aspect of the whole process. And they're read. Everybody, every, every single contractor that's there at the bid opening acknowledges and understands what's going on. Then the bids are read. In this case, the base bid was read and then the alternate was read. Then there's, you know, the choice by the city if they want to add the alternate or not. Well, in this case, there was an addendum that was not put on his paperwork. Okay? Then the, um, Strand and Associates, the consultant, calls him up, says, hey, you missed your addendum. So then he quickly goes and acknowledges and verbally, oh, no, no, I got it in there. Well, personally, professionally, and in the industry, it's wrong. It's ethically wrong to go and accept a bid that's not full, uh, it's not a full bid. Because why else would you have it in there? Why are you addressing the addendums? It is to find out and to make sure that everything that the contractor has a clear understanding that everything is covered. Okay? So you got five people that missed, let's say you got five people that missed, uh, the alternates. How do you address something like that? The purpose of it being on the paper and on the bid documents is it for, for it to be addressed. Is it not? So with that said, um, I would like to ask the council to really consider when you're, when you're voting on this, to really consider what the bid documents really say. I mean, when, when you go to the next bid letting for whatever it may be, um, you know, you, you really got to consider if you accept this, are you, uh, putting the city at like ethically on? on slippery water? You know, so you got to ask yourself. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Do you want to comment on that?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't mean to keep you standing, sir.
Pardon?
I don't mean to keep you.
You can take a seat. That's fine, okay.
Appreciate it.
In terms of it, I've submitted a memo that the council's received in terms of laying out the background, in terms of the facts. I can indicate, basically in a nutshell, it's my opinion that the city has the authority to accept this low bid of Gunderson excavating despite the failure to initially acknowledge addendum number one. There is on the bid form and in discussion with the city engineer, the city administrator, and then they're consulting with the consultant Strand as well, there is a page where there's an acknowledgement of any addenda, and that was missed. The lump sum bid page was completed with what was reflected on the council report, and there's a separate page for the alternate, and that was reflected on the bid as well. So in terms of it, I would note that the instructions to bidders indicated that the city can accept or reject bids with irregularities of any kind, and that the advertisement to bid states that the city reserves the right to waive any technicality and to accept any bid which it deems advantageous. So the bottom line is, I've gone through some case history in this memo in terms of trying to get the best price for the city and the best work. So in terms of it, I think that from a staff level, it's fair to say that we considered not just the lowest, apparent lowest bid, but also responsiveness and responsibility of the bidders. So in terms of that and in terms of comments made by Mr. Brandt, I mean, I can recommend to the council that I think that the city has the authority to accept this low bid and to indicate that we've considered all of these factors.
Okay. Alderman Kevich.
I appreciate Melissa's input in it, and yeah, I believe she's correct. My question is, did anybody else miss this? So again, then I question the responsibility of the bidder.
Right, and the answer is that just the one bidder of the 11 did not acknowledge the addendum. All other bids were in order.
Right, it seems to be a bid irresponsible, so.
Any other, any other question?
You know, that rubs me wrong.
Okay. Anything else for the council? Motion.
You'll move to award the city buildings and site demolition contract to the lowest responsive responsible bidder. Gunderson Excavating for a total lump sum bid price of $268,000.
For Haley, seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Kevich.
No.
For Haley.
Yes.
Tolman.
Aye.
Thank you. Item 14 is a consideration of resolution number 11649-100615, a resolution granting to We Energies a 20 by 50 permanent electric easement at 8040 South Sixth Street. Tax key number as listed, project 13051 in the second districts, district. Mike.
Basically, this is a, an easement that's required by We Energies for the facilities that they are going to be installing in Drexel Town Square Development. This would be the, to the service for the streetlights that will light, light throughout the whole development. And this is located on the extreme northwest corner of the city parcel, on the east side of Market Street from City Hall, which is a vacant parcel at this point. And there was a approval for an easement, which was a 15 by 25-foot easement back in July of this year. Since that time, there's been some redesign of the lighting, and in particular, the lights that are going to encompass and encircle the, the, the main town square area. They need to be fitted with outlets, both at the base of the lights and convenience outlets up at the, at the, up towards the high end of the lights for, to accommodate lighted Christmas decorations and whatnot. Basically, that, that, as that design was refined more recently, there became a need for a second service to that location and basically another ground-based transformer. So there will be two transformers and two controller boxes in that location. But basically, just did not have enough real estate in the original easement, so then the request by We Energies was to increase the size to a 20 by 50-foot rectangle. So, so basically, that's the, the request here.
Okay, questions? Alderman Kevich.
More of a comment. This is necessary for Drexel Town Square to have this, this power and controller there. It's unfortunately kind of sitting on a pretty prominent piece of real estate right out across from our park. This did come up at planning. I would urge engineering and We Energies to do some sort of screening as best they can. Again, it's essential for the development, but if we can kind of make it less of an eyesore, it would be appreciated.
Okay. Any other questions? Motion.
Kevich will make a motion to adopt resolution number 11649100615, a resolution granting to We Energies a 20 by 50 permanent electric easement at 8040 South Sixth Street. Tax key number 8139034000, project number 13051.
Haley, seconds.
Mark.
Haley, seconds.
Haley, seconds. Roll call.
Alderman, Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Kevich.
Aye.
For Haley.
Aye.
Tolman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Aye. For Haley.
Aye.
Tolman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Item 15 is a consideration of resolution number 11650-100615, accepting the workmanship and authorizing final payment for always contractors for project number 14033. This project involved the installation of storm sewer improvements in West Oakwood Road, Sixth District.
This was the storm sewer project that was undertaken, began last fall, was wrapped up then in, in the spring of this year, out in the 2000 west block of Oakwood Road. Project went fairly smoothly. Restoration looks great. If, if you drive along that stretch now, that all the grass has filled in, the, the road was, was paved over where it had been disturbed, basically asking that the work be accepted and the final payment go out. The payment is, is $5,000, which was, was some money that was, the city had retained in case there were issues with the, with the restoration. I guess the, the comment that I would make is that we, we had a, a, a big increase in the restoration quantities, and, and part of that was the intersection of Oakwood and Judith Lane, where the pavement just did not hold up, so we had to remove extra pavement and pave that in, and, and that all looks good now. But even more so, I, I would say that we grossly underestimated the restoration, restoration quantities that would be needed, and due to a state, the staging error in the restoration of, of that accounted for the, the overages on the project.
Okay, questions? Seeing none, motion?
Before I make a motion, do I need to include the dollar amount of $5,000 in this motion, or no?
I think the resolution as stated, sufficient.
No.
Okay, Guzakowski makes a motion to accept resolution number 11650100615, accepting the workmanship and authorizing a final payment for always contractors for project number 14033. This project involved installation of storm sewer improvements on West Oakwood Road.
Kirkowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Aye.
Kevich.
Aye.
For Haley.
Aye.
Tolman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Item 16 is a consideration of resolution number 11648-100615, acquiring fee property right-of-way permanent easements, temporary easements, and highway easements for the South Fifth Avenue relocation project from the intersection of State Highway 100, Ryan, State Highway 32, Chicago, to Fifth Avenue, Ryan Road, and to send a payment in the amount of the award of damages to the affected property owners, project number 12026 in the Fourth District. Mike.
So the negotiations have continued on with the affected property owners for the Fifth Avenue project, and that's, that's the one that's up on the screen now, and, and everybody's fairly familiar with this alignment for the, for the roadway. And this graphic you've seen before, the, the blue hatched properties, these four, those have been, those, those deals have been done, that real estate and those easements have been secured. The, the green hatched areas are the properties that are subject of tonight's item, and that's the Berkey property, the Slomka property, We Energies property, and then the O'Malley property. The O'Malley property is, is by far the, the largest affected by this one. This is for right-of-way for the road. This is going to be a future retention pond, and then there are some, some permanent easements, which are vision corners for the crossing with the railroad. And then the rest would be temporary easements for grading. Single Source has been working with these property owners, doing the appraisals. There's been follow-up appraisals, and there's been negotiations from that point, and, and so basically, they've come to agree with these four additional property owners. We had 12 to start with. The previous four, these four, we've got, basically, there's 11, excuse me, so then there's, there's three, three to go. This, this residential property, which is undeveloped, this residential property, which has a home on it, and then our dealings with the railroad.
How's the railroad stuff going?
It's moving along okay. Those never move along really quickly.
Yeah, that's why.
But, but we're, but we're staying on them, yes.
Good. Questions? Alderman for Haley.
Just one question on the O'Malley property. I know that they've been filling over there for quite some time.
Yes.
That work, did they, did they more or less get the road, future road bed prepped and ready for the city to, to work on that thing, or?
Yes.
I'm pretty sure they did, because in my previous conversations with you, I, I kind of know that, but I just wanted to make it clear.
Yes, they did. That, that road is, is graded to within a certain tolerance, we're talking inches, of, of where the proposed road subgrade needs to be. And that was one of the selling points, when, when the property owner was applying for the, his landfill license, that there was a real tangible benefit to the, to the city, the upcoming city project. So yes, that's been graded, and I think most of that site has already been restored with seed, so we should see that turning green here, so.
Yeah, the reason I ask that is for the benefit of the people in the audience, is it's, it's a fairly large amount of money, but we did get a lot of work done in kind in, in the process here, so.
Yes.
Not only you get the property, but a lot of the pre-grading work and stuff has been completed already for the city, so.
That's correct.
Good point. Alderman Tolman.
Mike, on the, on the original one here, not the amended, was there, was that just an oversight that the LLC was left out, or?
It was, it was, it was a typo, and it was, I believe, yeah, right. So, once, once that came to our attention, we got that corrected.
And one other question. Number nine, at Berkey property, is that anywhere near that contamination that was found on that property? Is that, has that been mitigated, any of that piece that we're, we're acquiring?
I don't have the specific information on that. From, from, from all of our deals in the lakefront properties, that site has been, has, is clean. I wonder if the, if the contamination they were referring to is the, the property that was further to the east?
Actually, further to the east, but I, I wanted to know how close it was, because I remember when that was mitigated, and that was not dug very deep, if I remember right. I mean, we only, we went down the minimum, and I don't know if that's going to present a problem in the future, or how close it is to that actual acquisition there.
It's a long ways away. It's a long way away.
Is it quite a ways?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I didn't remember exactly where it was, but, okay.
Good, fine.
Yep.
I have some questions about.
Can you pull the mic down?
Rosemary Anderson, 3920 East Ryan Road. I have some questions because the numbers didn't add up, the 61,771, what is that figure?
There's an error, Rosemary.
Well, that's an error?
Yeah.
And what is the number, then? Would it be the 245?
There's an amended copy you probably don't have access to.
I don't.
Or you have a copy of. Here, you can take this.
The Berkey property had been listed at $700. That, that actual figure is $10,102.45, and then down in the fiscal impact, I think you have it in front of you here now, the total cost of this action is $354,715.99. And the, not sure what happened, but something happened, and, and we did not catch that in the, in the quality control reading of the, of the document as it was created.
Okay. And then I have another question in regard to the Eric Slomka property.
Is that relevant?
That's number three? No. Would that be three?
That's this property here? Yes.
Right.
And so it's the vision triangle here for vehicles traveling this direction as they approach the, the railroad crossing.
Right, but they're actually not going to lose all of that property, because there's a right-of-way along the railroad company already, along the railroad tracks, and then they are going to gain some on the corner on Ryan, where that track will be discontinued, so they won't have an easement there. Is that correct?
Potentially.
So.
I, I, I mean, at this point, there, there's, there's no immediate plan to vacate this piece of public right-of-way.
Well, the railroad track will be gone, though, so therefore you.
The railroad crossing will be, will be gone, right. There will be no pavement that's going to be crossing at this, at this location.
Right, so you won't have to have that easement so that people can see, right?
Yes.
So they're going to gain something here on the other end, where they're going to lose it on the other end. So if we're talking about just compensation, why are they getting $7,400? Why aren't they just getting like the 700 that you would? Is it 700 that you do when you just do a title fee change?
The amount down there is, is a $7,400.
Yeah, right, but if you were just going to do a fee change, isn't that just 700? A title change?
I don't, I don't know what that figure is, to be honest with you.
Well, they're not losing any land.
They're not losing any land, they are granting an easement.
Right. So why are we paying them for an easement?
That's the appraisal of the, of the transaction.
Do we normally pay for easements? I never got paid.
Dedicated. If it's dedicated.
If it's a dedicated, like.
It's a permanent easement.
All right, is there a point to your question?
I, I just, yeah, the point was, we are paying $7,000 here.
It was asked and answered. Anything else?
Let me look.
Lawyer talk.
No.
Thank you very much for your question.
Oh, well, wait a minute. Actually, with this layout, their access is improved. They now will have highway access on to the Lake Drive.
Okay.
So that's a plus. I still don't see why we're paying them.
They would have access here.
Well, that's a good thing for them. Thanks for pointing that out. Anything else? Motion.
Tolman will make a motion to adopt resolution number 11648, acquiring fee property, permanent easements, temporary easements, and highway easements for the South Fifth Avenue relocation project from the intersection of State Highway 100, Ryan, State Highway 32, Chicago, to Fifth Avenue, Ryan Road, and to send a payment in the amount of the award of damages to
Roll call.
Alderman, Bicavitch.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Licensing, Alderman Kirkowski, 17.
17. Kirkowski will make a motion to grant an operator's license to Tiffany &amp; Woodson, 1721 West Lincoln Avenue, Milwaukee, 53215.
Gail, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bicavitch.
Aye.
18.
Gail will move to grant an operator's license to Christopher J. Kemkin, 1760 Schuman Drive, Union Grove, Wisconsin, 53182.
Guzekowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bicavitch.
Aye.
18, or 19, rather.
Kirkowski will make a motion to grant an operator's license to Barbara Alewski, 1427 Madison Avenue, South Milwaukee, 53172.
Guzekowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bicavitch.
Aye.
20?
20. License committee did not meet prior to this meeting. Kirkowski will make a motion to grant an operator's license to the 17 individuals listed on the agenda. Favorable background reports were received.
Gail, seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman, Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bicavitch.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Correction, I believe I made a, that we didn't meet. Those applications were received after we met.
Okay. Alderman, Toman has a question.
I need to go back on just one item here.
Go ahead.
Could I just take a second, Mike?
Yeah.
This is to Mike Simmons. On the...
You're really going back, okay. Go ahead.
On the, take a look on that map, the properties that we approved tonight to acquire. That number three, that's right next to the railroad there, just north of the green for the sightlines for the railroad?
Yes.
Is that, are we ever going after? We don't need that property, do we? That piece there that's parceled off?
Right. We don't need that property. Just that triangle, which is basically a permanent vision triangle, meaning they have restrictions. They can't put a structure there. They can't do any landscaping that's going to appreciably change.
All right. Okay. Thanks. I was confused there. Thank you.
Okay. 21?
Kirkowski will make a motion to grant a Class A liquor cider-only license to Speedway LLC, DBA Speedway, number 4462, Marcos Acevedo Agent, 8667 South Howell Avenue. Favorable background report received.
Gail, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bicavitch.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bicavitch.
Aye.
This time, we'll go in closed session. Clear the chambers, and we'll turn the cameras back on when we come back in open session. Thank you.
Gail will move to reconvene in open session.
Guzekowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
This time, we'll go in closed session. Clear the chambers, and we'll turn the cameras back on when we come back in open session. Thank you.
Gail will move to reconvene in open session.
Guzekowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bicavitch.
Aye.
Okay. So we're going to need a motion to approve what we just discussed in the closed session.